Motion to approve the regular agenda, please.
Motion to amend the agenda.
How would you like to amend it, please?
Okay.
Can you tell us how first?
Yep, I've got three items that I'd like to have considered.
Okay.
Okay.
Very quickly, let's hear them.
Motion to add the watershed districts who are in attendance here tonight to speak at the, on the watershed flooding issues that are health and safety issue for the residents of Grant.
Second.
Second one is a motion to post advertisement to form a citizens group to review our comprehensive plan and to post the advertisement so that the citizen of Grant are aware that we're looking for residents of Grant to rewrite our comprehensive plan and review it.
Okay, and number three, please.
Motion to table discussion of solar farms.
To table the discussion?
Yes.
So not to have the public hearing?
To remove it, remove it from, yes.
Remove it completely.
I guess I'd like to see a show of hand from the people that are here for the solar farm discussion versus a show of hand for the people that are here for the watershed issues.
Kim, have you heard from Mr. Lanu on any of these issues?
I have not.
You have not, not one of them. Let's go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor of adding these three items, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion not in favor of adding these three items, please say no.
No.
No. Thank you very much, listen to new.
At this time...
Make a motion to approve the regular agenda.
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor of the irregular agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed.
Nay.
Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second the consent agenda.
Second. Yeah, I got a second from Danny first, pal, sorry.
So you're not going to correct the city council minutes?
Let's talk about the process to do that, Larry. You know what the process is to do that. I appreciate you having to relearn it every time you sit up here when we have a new audience. However, it's been explained to you possibly fifteen or twenty times that the way to amend these minutes is to speak with the clerk before the meeting. This is the efficient way to do it, not to come here and have fifteen and twenty minute arguments about where the commas are and where the periods are, Larry. So this has been explained to you numerous times and frankly, because the people are here for the flooding problems down there, I would really like to get to that. I would like to announce the neighborhood meeting that we're going to be having with the Valley Branch Watershed District, and I'd like to get to those items. So those are the important items, those are the items that are going to give these people some help. You changing nonsensical minutes past the time when you were supposed to have done that, which you have known for at least a year and a half, is a waste of my time and the council's time. Mr. Carr.
The only comment I would have with that too, you know, we've had, longstanding, we had a chronic issue with people coming forward with things on the agenda with no documentation. We didn't know. Residents didn't know it was going to be on agenda. They might have wanted to be here. So if they would, if Larry would have gone through the process, got it to the clerk, decided that was going to be put on, and we would have got documentation in our packet so we could have an intelligent discussion about what was there, people could show up, that's called good government, not just coming to the meeting, trying to throw a bunch of stuff on there where we can't have a really intelligent discussion. That being said, there's always council discussions at the end of the meeting where we can talk in general about things, and we can, no motions are taken, but at least we can have a conversation about even putting it on the agenda for the next agenda, and we can decide that tonight.
Okay.
But Larry, no, I'm not done, thank you. I just, I tire of this because it's just, I don't know what it is, grandstanding, I guess we'll call it, and it's ridiculous. It's not fair to everybody. It's not fair to the people that come to see the meeting, that watch the meeting, it's not fair to us, it's not fair to the staff, it's not fair to anybody. So I wish this would stop, and so I, you know, and Larry, you do know the procedure, we've told you this over and over, for people that see this for the first time, they think, oh my god, maybe he, that, you know, we're being mean or something. No, this is like literally the fifteenth, twentieth time we've talked about this. So I just wish it would stop. So, I'm done.
There is a procedure, and Mr. Lanu knows this, and again, Mr. Carr's put it very well. We have people come to these meetings, Mr. Lanu puts this stuff on, or attempts to put this stuff on, we can't even speak as to what it's about. I have no supporting documentation whatsoever on any of these things. The Valley Branch Watershed District is not here to talk tonight, they haven't even had their meeting. They have indicated to me they can't talk, they do not have permission to talk at this point. So, mister, ma'am?
Why not?
Ma'am?
Excuse me.
Ma'am? Valley Branch Watershed District was right over there. I will not put up with that last time, thank you. Mr. Lanu.
Yes. Mr. Carr, Mr. Huber, you both say that I have not done it. Actually, Kim, did I not send you an email requesting that the Valley Branch Watershed and the flooding issue be put on tonight's agenda?
Mayor and council members.
Prior to the agenda being set?
This is it, now we're all done, we're going to take our vote.
I did. So at this time, I am going to...
I'm going to see, here goes Larry.
Clerk. At this time, I have a request for a special meeting to be held on June 13th, one week from tonight, regarding the flooding in Grant and the health and safety and welfare of the citizens of Grant. I'm asking of the police post recruit requirement for public notification, I'm asking our clerk to notify all watersheds in Grant, Klein Brothers X, which I also requested that he would be here tonight, obviously he must have been told not to be here because he agreed to be here, and all affected residents of flooding. At first state statute, it says it only takes two city council members to have a written request to call for a special meeting. I have these documents...
Larry, deliver the documents. Fantastic, deliver the documents and then let's discuss it.
So that she can sign it.
Deliver the documents.
We will have a meeting here one week from tonight.
I'm back.
At Minnesota statute.
Come on back and have a seat, come on.
And like I said, this was put on the agenda prior to that.
Actually, it wasn't. It actually wasn't, Larry.
Was it asked to be put on?
Larry, have a seat.
Admit or deny.
Your chair is right here.
Sit down.
Your chair is right here.
Admit or deny.
Mr. Lanu, your chair is here, come back and speak with us.
You say that we don't do it properly. I put it in to be put on there.
Come back and speak with us.
You sir, just lied to the citizens of Grant.
Okay, come back and have a seat, let's talk.
Mayor and council members, I want to answer council member Lanu. Request was put in about 2:00 Tuesday, the agenda was set, the packets were put together to put the Valley Branch Watershed District on the agenda. I had no documentation, no purpose why, nothing, so.
You could have called and asked. We have flooding, we have eighty-year-old residents that are septic that are flooded.
I just want to say thank you, Larry, for addressing the issue we have on Jocelyn Road, which has been underwater for a good month.
Ma'am, you missed the public comment. Can I have you sit down, please?
We're fine.
Thank you very much, ma'am, I didn't see your hand. Thank you very much. Are you ready? We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Can I get a vote on that, please? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed.
No.
No. Ma'am, and all of you from the Sunnybrook neighborhood that are here, please stay, do not leave, we are going to have a comprehensive discussion about this. It's just not time on the agenda yet. We're going to have a long discussion.
One wait for tonight after, to meet Minnesota statute.
Long discussion. All right, we're going to move right into our agenda items here. And Brad, it looks like you're first on the block. We have the consideration of 2017 Steel Coat Project for quote solicitation. Brad, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Back in 2015, we put together a comprehensive maintenance plan. We're in the third year of that plan. We attached, or I attached, the plan for reference for you, your purposes. This year's roadway plan or maintenance is planned for the streets on the southern portion of the city, the streets Calvin Avenue, 61st Street North, 67th Lane North, 67th Street North, 60th Lane North, and 65th Street North. Now, as many of you know, we held a open house about a month ago for these streets in this area, allowing citizens to bring forward a petition to use some of these maintenance dollars for a roadway reconstruction project. We do have a petition, and that will be my next item agenda, but for the purposes of this memo, I'm simply looking for a direction from council so that we can go out and solicit quotes for doing some steel coating in these streets, and then doing some, probably some patching on 61st Street and 60th Street. We already have Brockman black topping on contracts, so we would be using them for the patching of the streets. So, the budget for this work is $58,000 for all these streets. So there again, I'm looking for direction to go out for quotes, solicit quotes for the seal coating.
And Brad, let me start off here real quick, just a quick question. Is your professional opinion that all of these streets are going to benefit from and have their lives extended through this treatment? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, you feel that way, okay. I really don't have any further questions. This is really one of these things that we have done on a continuing basis for many years, and with the minimal road dollars that we have and the minimal budget that we work within, unfortunately, sometimes this is the best thing we can do to keep water out of some of these older roads and maintain them and preserve their life as long as possible. It's one of the better things that we can do. So, I don't have any further questions. Larry, you have a question?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve Brad to go forward and get the quotes of seal coat and properly maintain our roads.
Second. Okay, for discussion, Mr. Carr.
I was just curious, did we have a petition going around? Does anybody want to take us up on that? I mean, is that next, so we're going to talk about that?
Yeah, 65th Street.
Okay, so is that going to affect this then, or we just...
It'll, it'll, so part of that $58,000 is for 65th Street, so...
Right, I know, I just, so we're, just bringing that up so we are aware of that.
Yep, yep.
Okay. All right, we have a first and a second down here. Mr. Lanu, Mr. Cedarstrom, all those in favor of going out for bids on this, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good.
Mayor, members of the council, we'll bring those quotes back for next month's approval.
Excellent, thank you. Moving forward, Brad is now going to talk to us about declaring the adequacy of the petition and ordering preparation of report. I'm happy to announce that 65th Street, under the leadership of Mr. Daniel Collins, 10177 65th Street, has requested a feasibility study and has gotten eighty-seven and a half percent of all property owners to sign a petition requesting that feasibility study. I am thankful to Mr. Collins, if he's here, thank you very much, sir. But Brad, can you take it from here, please?
Sure, so in order for us to move forward with a special assessment process, we needed a petition from the residents. We received that petition, as you mentioned, from Daniel Collins at 10177 North 65th Street, requesting the feasibility report, and the feasibility report is really the first step in the process of the special assessments. Once we order, once council feels like they want to order the feasibility report, we'll continue the process by public hearings, perhaps even a neighborhood meeting with these residents to explain in more detail, I guess, the process of special assessments so they really have a good understanding of the process and what needs to happen in order for this project to move forward. So, I provided a map, the petition, the letter, like you had mentioned, Mayor, the petition was from all, at least one property owner of all the parcels along 65th Street, so we've got really good support for the project and...
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with that.
I'll second that motion.
And it might be a little bit premature here, gentlemen, I'm not even sure that we require a motion on this. If we can just hold for a moment and let Brad finish?
Yeah, so there's a resolution too that goes with this, and we're looking for action on the resolution declaring the adequacy of the petition and ordering the preparation of the feasibility report.
And prior to that, let me then ask, in your professional opinion, you have declared it sufficient to move forward, is that correct?
That's...
You've seen this petition, and it looks as though the proper forms have been filled out, is that correct?
Absolutely, Mayor.
Very good then. Mr. Lanu and Mr. Cedarstrom then have a first and second, but we do have a discussion with Mr. Carr, I believe.
Right, and I'm not sure what their motion was for. I think they need a motion to pass the resolution.
Yeah, gentlemen, could you restate that actually with the numbers in the resolution, please?
We'd like to make a motion to pass the resolution.
Can you go ahead and just name up the resolution number for me?
Certainly. That's 2017-11, declare, declaring adequacy of petitioning and ordering preparation of report.
Thank you very much. Do you have a second on that?
I second that.
Very good.
Okay, no further discussion, please.
Yeah, Mr. Carr.
So, with your discussion with the people on 65th, I noticed on our seal coating plan, it looks like we've got about $3,883, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that will be off of the $58,000, okay?
That's correct.
Plus, we typically do some pottle money with that, so I don't know if you've got a ballpark figure, what we could tell people when you're having a discussion.
You know, we have, once we get through the feasibility report, we'll have a good idea what the costs are.
Okay, so that's the only thing, I would say, we've done that before with people, so I think we should be consistent.
Yep.
Is all I'm saying, and I'm just stating for the record that that was the money that we had in the plan.
And I think it would be, you know, a good idea to have that open house, so we'll have costs at that open house and we can discuss that stuff.
And also the assistance, as Mr. Carr's... I just, just making sure we, yeah, okay, bring it up. Real good, we've got a first and a second on the, for all those in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have another five votes, thank you, gentlemen. Moving forward, Brad, we still got you on the spotlight here, consideration of 2017 Special Roads Projects. I'm gonna have you start on this one, Brad, and then I have a couple of comments on this before we actually have discussion or really make any decisions on this. So Brad, you just want to start on this and kind of lay it out for us?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, each year, or each, for the last three years, we've done a special roads project in the city of Grant. The last couple of years, we've, we've did some roadway patching on Keats Avenue, and our budget usually is $25,000, but I understand it's a little more than $80,000 this year, so we've got quite a bit more money than was anticipated. Over the last month, I, we've met with staff and put together a list of good candidates we feel would be worthy of this special road project. The first, the first area is the Keats Avenue, the last third of that roadway project, the last, the last two years, we've did some major patching on that road. We got a couple guard rail installations, one on 83rd Street and the other one on Ironwood. There's been some discussion about gravel roads and, and too much sand in the material, and we're looking at maybe blending in some good rock material in with that sandy material to stabilize the roads. We've listed Joliet Avenue north of 96th a couple of times in the last couple of years, we haven't got to that project. And then also, we've got Jocelyn Road North and Keats, and I'm assuming those are to raise those roads, so be open to discussion.
Okay, let me start on that. What I was hoping to do here, and we've all, I think, received Brad's updated memorandum on this, adding Keats and Jocelyn Road and the raising of that. There's a much longer discussion that I plan to have during our council discussions, open discussions on this problem, but just as a primer here, Keats and Jocelyn Road have been flooding from the emails that I've gotten for about thirty-plus years now, I guess. And other councils have raised those roads in successive increments to try to at least keep the roads open, because as most of you know, the city's responsibility is the roads, it is not, unfortunately, the, or sort of fortunately, because of the complexity of the problem, the actual water flow there. That belongs to another taxing authority, not the city. So, what I'd like to do is go ahead and sort of ask our council members to rank these, and if I were going to rank them, Keats and Jocelyn Road, the raising of those, to harden them against floodwaters would be my number one and two. After that, I'm somewhat open to some of these other ones, but I certainly think that we should dedicate some road dollars to making sure this council, after thirty years, moves forward in a proactive manner to make sure we're keeping those roads open as much as we possibly can. I can't, I, I'm not going to discuss motives or anything else of past councils, it doesn't matter at this point. Moving forward proactively is the best thing that we can do for these residents, and again, so I would rank Keats and Jocelyn, raising those as my number one and two project. Mr. Carr.
Well, my only concern, and I'm, I think that's fine, I think we've raised them over the years, is, and in my understanding, there's sort of a dip there where the water's coming over, that the elevation would be more even, which is fine. I guess my concern from the watershed is that they, the engineering study on that or something, so that we know that we're not going to flood out people's houses.
Right.
The unintended consequences of raising the road, I just want to make sure we know what we're doing, we don't do that and flood people out, because that would be horrible.
Yeah, you've said that, and it's funny that you say that I have asked and communicated with Valley Branch Watershed District, who have been incredibly helpful and very communicative once we touched base, very communicative, very good, and I asked that actual question. How do I know if I do this? I look at a thirty-year record of councils not raising this road, not, to me, it doesn't make sense. It looks to me as though it may complicate flooding in other areas. I'm not a hydrologist, I'm not an engineer, I don't pretend to be one. So, when I talk about raising roads, the amount that we're going to need to raise, especially Keats, I worry from a standpoint that I may be endangering some other homeowners there. I had no good information to make that call earlier, unfortunately. Valley Branch Watershed District has kindly said that they are going to present to us an engineering study, an engineering background on the situation, where we can be sure as a council that if we do take these steps and we do raise these roads up to try to flood, harden them as much as we can, that we are not endangering people inadvertently. There is no way for me to have known that before, I couldn't have known that, none of us could have known that because we're not engineers. But, Valley Branch Watershed District, at their meeting on the eighth, as I understand, is going to be looking over a memorandum that details the engineering issues that I've just talked about, and hopefully they're going to give us their blessing, if you will, in order to get these roads raised. So, I guess I'm just going to make a quick caveat and a quick change here on one or two my ranking, I would say that these would be contingent upon the engineering study that Valley Branch Watershed District approves.
For sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that'd be fine, the only other, the only other thing, I don't see any costs on here.
Yeah.
We only have so much, although, although, I'm not sure what other road funding, if that money's going to come from the state, but...
We've got, we've got $80,000 in special road projects right now. I have been talking with our state legislators, both our House rep and our Senate rep about the legislation that was just pushed through. I had numbers from them six weeks ago, which I'm really glad I didn't announce because the actual number came in very much lower. Had I announced that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to be here tonight.
What did you say, eighty, Jim?
Yeah, we have 80,000 in the special road projects right now.
Why does it say 25 on here?
Because it's wrong.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Comment?
It's a table, hang on a second, Lauren, almost done, yep, and then you're up next. So I did not announce that, we do have some money coming in from the state, I don't know the exact number yet, I'm not going to announce it. Once we have that, we're going to have some more money. Kim, if I'm not mistaken, we have received a preliminary cost estimate for raising Keats and Jocelyn Road, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, could you read those cost up to us, please, so that we can make a determination as to whether that ranking makes sense?
For Keats Avenue, you're looking at approximate $12,000.
And Jocelyn Road?
Jocelyn is about $10,000.
So we've got $22,000 here that, we've got the money to spend, so I guess the one and two makes sense from my perspective to rank them, the first two road projects that we do. Obviously, we've got $80,000 in there, as we just established. We do have some additional funds coming from the state this year in terms of aid to local cities, which is a very welcome addition to get that money back. So, I would leave those ranked, they're one and two with, again, with a caveat, contingent on the Valley Branch Watershed District engineering study. Lauren, you are next.
Okay. The watershed districts, in fact, are a taxing entity.
That's correct.
And one of the things we could do is see if we could, I know there was a situation before in the nineties where they had a grant program and we would have to come up with the matching money. Rather than just build the road higher, wouldn't it make sense to solve the problem rather than putting a Band-Aid on it? If they can come up with, and you're doing the engineering, which is very positive, that's excellent, but I think if we can get work with them, they have funds available, they can help us solve the problem rather than just raising the road, you know, because that, like you're saying, that could act as a much higher dam and flood more people. So let's solve the problem, is kind of what I'm getting at. I've been to a, to a Valley Branch meeting, and from, from what I've been hearing, they seem to be very open to working with us, and they have some funding. Of course, the city will have to kick in some money, but it makes sense to bring in extra money when it's so hard to come by.
No, I don't think any reasonable person can disagree with what you just said there. It depends, again, on the engineering. That, reaching for that solution after a thirty-year issue, I think is commendable, and I think we should be reaching for that issue, if not, or that solution, but if we cannot reach a solution, for whatever reason, engineering or what have you, we should be reaching for as much mitigation as we can to minimize the impact of the water flows in that area. That's what I'm looking for. Would I love the solution? Do I think that's the way to go? Absolutely.
If I could add one more thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
I was, I was at the meeting, and they are going forward with a temporary pumping solution, which this also could be maybe an in-between stop before we get the final solution. So what I'm saying, instead of just raising the road and, hey, we're going to spend forty grand on that, and then the problem comes back, maybe we should look at even maybe helping out or coming up with a solution for, I guess it's a thousand-foot of piping, and they're going to drain the water into a gravelly area. The problem is that the soils are like a clay in St. Lomen, water doesn't go through it. If they can get the water transferred a few thousand feet to the east where there's more porous soil, that'll also help mitigate the problem. And so that's another possibility, one of the pieces to the puzzle, so I think we really should be looking at that also.
Well, I think that they have, they have considered that, I know that there's an agreement with the golf course owner down there, I won't name, I don't see him here, an agreement there right now. I was stopped down there right before he came here, and the pipe that is pumping out of the golf course pond on the east side of Keats is rock hard, so it's pumping as we speak, and that's a six-inch pipe coming out of there. So, that has come down considerably, obviously not as much as we want, but it looks as though that is happening, and certainly, Valley Branch Watershed District can present a full, a full menu, a full smorgasbord of different things that we can do to try to, again, mitigate and hopefully find a solution for this problem. We won't do it tonight because it's a little complicated, but we will do it at the neighborhood meeting. Larry, you've been waiting for a while there.
Brad, do you know who our road commissioner is?
Can, do you want to do this?
Not a trick question, just stick, if you're kind enough to let me finish my question.
I just want to ask one question. Do you think this perhaps is more appropriate for you to do it on the updates?
Nope, no, I think this is done, is appropriate right now. Do you know who the road commissioner is?
Do I know who the road commissioner is?
Yes.
No, I don't.
You are. Do you know who the, do you know who the Valley Branch, or the watershed district representative is for our city?
Would be John Hanson?
No, that's you.
Okay.
You were appointed at the appointment list. For the last two years, you've been our road commissioner and our Valley Branch, and I'm here to proudly say, you probably never attended or spoke to any people in our water district. That being said, I'm very aware of the pump that got put in on Keats Avenue. I found a contractor that does stormwater systems, we put it in. We went from a two-and-a-half-inch pressure main to a six-inch pressure main. We have dropped, where the water was coming up at four inches per day flooding, we have maintained it, and we have dropped it five to six inches in the last few days. We can drop it. By raising that road, we're not going to further flood something down here, because if you understood anything that's out there, there's already a culvert in that road, that equalizes itself already. So you're not further doing, what you're allowing is because you're allowing simply the trucks to go through. Now, I called our Washington County deputy, I called both fire departments, we closed that road, nobody notified, any fire department or police department, we were closing roads. fire department or police department. We were closing roads. We're talking about health, safety, and welfare here. So my suggestion is, yes, we do take both Keats and Jocelyn and raise those roads, but I'm gonna ask the people that wanna understand the issue a little bit, and you say, "We need engineering"? There is sixty pages I have right here of engineering data. Has this been engineered and redone six different times? Read it, you will understand it. And for the citizens out there that don't know where to go find it, I ask you to go to thegrantreporter.com.
Stop the advertising of the political websites. They will not have it.
This is not, you will not have it because it has all the documents.
It is unseemly, and you should not bring it up this table, Larry.
It has all the documentation for those watersheds.
Enough. You're done.
The information is here, sixty pages of it. So please go to the grant reporter and find it because our city evidently doesn't know where to find it, nor do they give a damn and put it on their website.
We do actually give a damn. It's funny that you say we didn't let anyone know. I had a conversation...
Did you know you had the sixty pages of documents? Did you review it, Jeff?
I have, I'm not an engineer.
Did you know that he was our watershed manager?
I did know that.
But he didn't. Maybe you should let our staff know.
Well, do you think he was gonna go out there with a bucket and move the water himself? Or what exactly did you want him to do, Larry?
Brad.
And I'm not gonna get into it. I now have the floor, so you're done.
I called seven-six-three-five-four-one-four-eight-hundred on a telephone voice mail.
Larry, enough, enough, enough.
And our...
Enough yelling. Calm down.
Water branch shed. Why didn't you not return a phone call?
Relax.
You didn't return a phone call while these houses were flooding?
Let's have a discussion, Larry.
Does WSB give a damn, or does the city give a damn?
Do you give a damn?
Yeah.
Where were you for the last, where were you for the last two years? You said at this council, for two years, you lived in the city since...
Where have I been here?
Nineteen eighty-two. Why didn't you do anything?
Because the flooding is my job when it come aware.
Why?
Did you not turn down?
There we go. Now we're back and forth.
Okay, I got another...
Can I have a question?
Go ahead.
Unless I misheard, but did Mr. Lenou say he called the sheriff and shut the road down?
No, I made him aware that the road is shut down, and I called both fire departments because our city failed to do so.
Hang on.
Did you get a phone call from anybody informing you that the road was shut down so that we could inform everybody that Larry said we didn't inform? Did Larry communicate anything to you about that?
Councilmember Lenou did not.
Okay, so no communication, okay.
Yeah, well...
That's the duty of the road!
So we are, we are... He has the floor.
We are a team. Larry?
Doesn't appear that way.
Well, no, it doesn't because you have chosen not to be a team member. And even when I sat up here with people that I may not have totally disagreed with or had issues with, I always tried to work with them. And when the decisions were made, I went with the decisions. We bought a grader, we did a lot of things, okay? But once the decisions were made as a city council, we went forward with them because that's our job. I don't think the residents want to see us sit up here and squabble and do this, and it makes us look ridiculous. And of course, I think that's your point.
That you are ridiculous.
But, well, thank you, Larry. I appreciate that. Good team talk. So I think we want to get forward with this. I've sat here for a long time with this. I've been where flooded, where it didn't flood. I'm where it flooded, where it didn't flood. Last time I went out there and stood there, I said, "I'm not gonna drop this." I have not. Every couple of months, I talked to our engineer. What's going on? What's happening? I promised these people I wasn't gonna drop it. It's been going on. Government's slow. It stinks sometimes how slow it is. There's a lot of alternative solutions. I floated them. I floated ways to get the water out of the headwaters before it gets to the lake. I hear this, or I don't have any money. I hear it all, okay? So we've been trying to do this. It's just not easy when you're working with a bunch of different areas, and that's what government is kind of like. I wish we could all just go down there, hook up a big pump, and start it up, but we also, as city council members, don't have permits to do that. And if the watershed decided what is going on, then that person could be liable for that issue. And I hope the city would not be liable if that's a council person doing that. We can't go around doing things like that. We need to work through the process. I know our mayor has now said he wants to have a meeting. We want to talk about this. I'm full of ideas that I'd love to work with people on. I've been trying to do this for two-plus years, but every time I call, "Well, we can't do this. We need a half a million dollars." Well, we don't have a half a million dollars. And Lauren's right. I'd like to fix the problem. We don't have that kind of money. And they won't do some stuff without, I've had conversations with the guys. They won't do stuff without matching money on some of this stuff. So it's hard. So we, I don't know, gotta do something, but we have to work through it as a city council, not with the rhetoric, not with the finger pointing, not with the name-calling, but let's just work through this and get it fixed and figure it out.
Yeah.
So I would just like to have a real discussion rather than all the bantering. Thank you.
Yeah, Lauren, you're up.
Okay. I was at that meeting, and previously, there was a grant, a large grant, but the city would have to participate, this is in the nineties, to the tune of seventy thousand dollars. Now, they were gonna kick in, I thought it was 1.1 million to solve this problem, but the city didn't, decided not to come up with the seventy thousand dollars. Well, to me, that seems kind of, you know, if you're getting a ten-to-one or twelve-to-one replacement, it would make sense to solve the problem. So we've been through this once before, and the city was just too cheap to do it, you know? So we're gonna have to do something, folks. You know, we just can't, you know, "Oh, we can't spend a nickel." Well, guess what? When you're talking about saving people's homes, I think the city can afford to spend some money.
That's an interesting history lesson, and thank you for that. None of us were here in the nineteen nineties. As I said, this has been a thirty-year problem. Larry, you're done. You've had your say on this.
Actually, you got a summary. The study was done in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, two thousand one, two thousand two, two thousand three, two thousand three to four. It's been studied over and over, and actually, the results of the studies were here.
Were you on the council that time?
No, I wasn't, but you were.
No, I actually wasn't. It's two thousand sixteen.
Okay.
Anyway, here's the point.
You've been here, and it's failed.
Larry, Larry, please, stop with the name-calling. We're not getting anything done. Let's try to move forward, get these ranked, and then we'll go to that neighborhood meeting, and we'll get something done. We'll get these roads raised. Obviously, no other council has done it. Don't you think perhaps we should do it?
Yeah. At this time, I'd like to make the citizens aware, there is a special meeting one week from tonight, as per statute. They are required to have it. I'd ask the watersheds to come back one week from tonight, be prepared. I'd ask the citizens to go and look at the document. There's sixty pages of documentation. And I'd ask our city council and our city engineer to review that documentation so they can come here and talk and be informed.
Thank you very much. We'll talk about the neighborhood meeting when we get to the discussion items.
Councilmembers have gone to the website and read that. Will the council members also look at the request?
Absolutely, we will. Of course we will.
They have not done that.
If, no one knew it was there. Larry waits till he comes here, ma'am. So there's no way for us to know that stuff was there. How did you know?
We've all known. It's in the...
We didn't know, Larry. All we did is look at the problems for Grant and the watershed have.
Okay. Well, I didn't know it existed, ma'am, to let you know that.
But we knew this was a thirty-year problem.
Right.
But I am so glad you will review it for the next meeting. Thank you.
One week from tonight, as required by Minnesota statute.
Okay. Larry, we'll have the attorney speak about that.
And we can have a meeting outside. If the rest of the council doesn't want to attend, we can simply hold the meeting outside.
Okay. Good enough, Larry. Let's keep...
Mr. Huber wants a meeting at the church where it will not be recorded and it will not be in the minutes.
Of course it'll be.
There is no documentation to do that at the church. I would like that meeting, it's a special meeting. I would like the video recorder to be here. We'll have an open, honest discussion.
Obviously, lost control of this meeting here. So I think we're gonna take another reset until Mr. Lenou can control himself and we actually stick to the program. If you want to do this on discussion items, I told you where we would discuss the neighborhood meeting, okay, Larry? So if we just keep going forward on this, that'd be fantastic. Do you want to go ahead and rank these, Larry? Are Keats and Jocelyn Road your number one and two? Yes or no?
Here's some copy of the special meeting request you'd like...
Okay, we're gonna keep going. Denny, do you want to rank these? Is one and two okay for you on Keats and Jocelyn?
Yep, Keats is one, Jocelyn is two.
Jocelyn is two, great. Mr. Carr, can you rank these up for us?
Yeah, I mean, if we get the engineering report and we can do that without flooding other people out, yeah, I think that was important. And I think the guardrail on Eighty-Third, where exactly is that?
Yeah, talk to us about that.
What is that issue?
It's right next to one of the larger wetlands along Eighty-Third.
Wrong Eighty-Third, that's right, that's right, yes.
Mayor, councilmembers, I will note that the previous road commissioner, the city no longer has one, but the previous road commissioner, that was one of his projects, was to get those guardrails out.
Yeah.
And it didn't happen. I would highly recommend, based on costs, to get those done on Ironwood and Eighty-Third.
Well, and the first project we did as special road projects way back when, when I put a couple bucks in, was to put in that guardrail up off iron, one of them. So, yeah, I think I'd go with the guardrails right now.
I think that's...
So one, two, three?
Yeah.
A gentleman, it said, "Sit well with you, one, two, three for the guardrails?" Or Larry, I'm sorry, Tom wasn't done, sorry.
No, no, that's fine. You said Ironwood and Eighty-Third? Is Ironwood on here? Or is that Eighty-Third?
We just got Eighty-Third.
So Ironwood, too?
On your revised memo, it should say.
Oh, I mixed these up. I didn't know it was, I guess I missed that.
There's a spot on Ironwood, too, I believe, out by the dry hydrant.
Yeah, I think I'd go for those, and then I'm not sure what kind of money we'd have left. I just have to get an estimate, and then we can figure out where we can spend it later.
And I will also note, there could be some additional culvert costs this year. So if you prioritize what you can at this point, if there are some dollars left over, there could be some culvert work due to the flooding. There were some collapsed culverts.
Okay. Good enough. So one, two, three from you guys. We have the guardrail, Keats, Jocelyn, and the guardrail. Fantastic. Lauren, do you want to rank these up?
Sure. Keats, we want to finish that up. I think Jocelyn Road is number two. I don't know if I'd put the guardrails three. Yeah, it's nice to have them, but, you know, the other two are much more important, and we also have to worry about the culverts and some other issues.
Okay, so let me make sure that I understand you. So are you agreeing that the Keats raising project and the Jocelyn Road raising project are number one and two? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you want to hold off on the guardrails?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Larry, do you have a ranking on these? What do you want to do?
Yes, I do. Keats Avenue, well, actually, Keats Avenue is number one. We need to get that so we can control and maintain the road issue. There is a culvert underneath her. They will equalize each other. We need for health, safety, and welfare to do Keats and Jocelyn Avenue, followed up by number three, Keats Avenue north of the rest of the paving project on Keats. And my last one that I'd also like to rank is Joliet Avenue north of Ninety-Six. For the last three years, that has been on our special roads project. People go out there. It leads directly to the only mill and overlay leading right to their driveway. They get a complete mill and overlay, and every year, they put themselves in for a special roads project, folks.
Larry, it's not a special road.
It's trying to protect the health, safety, and welfare over the welfare of their city because their road's not all that bad.
Nice drive, Larry. Nice drive.
You should see my road. It's incredible.
It's incredible.
Yeah, Larry has brand-new curb-to-curb on his road.
The best road in Grant was County Road Nine, and they refused to take the millings from that and put them on Keats prior to flooding.
I don't see that on the agenda.
A road grader asked to do that. We could take in the material that was out there.
Enough, we're done. We're gonna move off on this, Brad.
We have failed. It's called malfeasance.
You have one, two, and three. You have that.
Well, three and four, if you both guardrails.
Malfeasance.
We're moving forward.
Sounds good.
All done. Special roads projects, we're gonna jump over Jennifer. We don't have anything for her. Let's jump to our city attorney, Kevin Sandstrom. I'd love to hear a voice of reason in the wilderness.
All right.
Kevin, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on the agenda is the solar farms moratorium ordinance. First aspect of that is to hold a public hearing on the issue. Again, the nature of this ordinance that we're looking at tonight is simply a moratorium, which would prohibit developments of this sort in the city and would request city staff, as well as the city planning commission, to engage in study of these issues and come up with a recommendation as far as particular regulations. Again, the reason this is before you is because your city administrator did receive inquiries from a specific party that was interested in potentially looking at these sort of developments in the city, but city staff recognized that there was no regulations of these issues in our existing code. So the purpose of the moratorium ordinance is simply to allow for a halt on any developments of that sort so that study can be conducted and regulations created. The purpose of the public hearing, then, is not to discuss the merits of solar farms, but just to discuss the merits of a moratorium and further study on those issues.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me make that real clear. I just want to state it one more time. This moratorium does not block solar farms or solar installations. That's not the purpose at all. What this does is it gives the city a year to work on good ordinances so that we can control them. It's like having an ordinance for paving roads or having an ordinance for raising roads, or something similar to that. We want to make sure that we have the science, the study done, so that we know what we're getting into, and it gives us one year to do that. That's all it gives us. We have to have that completed within one year. So that's what we're gonna be doing tonight. And can I just go ahead and open that public hearing, Cam? Is that okay?
Yep.
All right, well, let's go ahead and open the public hearing for the interim ordinance placing a temporary moratorium on solar farm facilities in the city and directing a study to be conducted so that we can learn more about this issue as a council. I would really appreciate it if you come on up to the microphone, give us your name and address, and talk to us about this moratorium, what you think of it, and what you think it can do for the city, and what you think we should perhaps be studying as we move forward on this issue. Anyone here to speak on this, please? Second call for the moratorium on solar farm facilities, please. Public hearing. All right. Do we need a vote to close the public hearing, Cam?
I'd like a motion in a second.
Looks like we have no one here. Can I get a motion in a second to close this?
Motion to close the public hearing? Second.
Fantastic. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
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 And we have another five-zero. Again, everyone, this does not stop solar farms in Grant. That is not the purpose. It is the purpose to give us a brief break so that the staff can do the research necessary to make sure that we have a good plan and process when that solar farm does finally reach Grant. We want to be prepared for it.
One other item, perhaps, to mention, Mr. Mayor. In conjunction with this ordinance, we also have a request from staff for summary publication.
Correct.
That's the resolution that follows the proposed ordinance. That's Resolution 2017-12. That's simply to save the city on publication costs, to publish a shorter summary of the ordinance rather than the ordinance in full.
Thank you for reminding me of that, Mr. Sandstrom. That's absolutely correct. We'll go ahead and ask for a motion to approve 2017-12.
Are we doing twelve, or are we doing fifty-two? May I have clarification?
You do fifty-two first, I think, don't you?
Oh, pardon me. You're absolutely right, Larry. Getting off track here. Let's take a motion to approve 2017-52 first, please.
Also approve.
Point of order?
Yes, please. We closed the public hearing, but we did not vote on 2017-52.
Thank you.
The public hearing was closed.
Now we have discussion. We have a motion on the floor.
We have a motion, any second, though, first.
Need a second for discussion.
Second.
Second? Great. Discussion. Larry, do you want to have somebody to say on the moratorium?
Yeah. I'd like to say that this moratorium, which could have been tabled, you can see, nobody's here and worried about a solar farm moratorium. I think it was more important that we addressed the citizens of Grant and our watersheds that did come here this evening. That just shows how dysfunctional this city is. So at this time, I don't, I guess I'd like to see if we got a, do we have a whole flood of people coming in here asking for moratorium honor? Because I know not too long ago, you passed a resolution talking about placing sidewalks in Grant.
Thank you so much. You're not sticking to the topic, so I'm gonna go ahead and call a vote on this, ordinance number 2017-52. You know exactly why we're doing it. You were at the meetings, you agreed with it. So let's go ahead and take a vote on those. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
All right, thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-12.
Second.
Great. All those in favor of Resolution Number 2017-12, please say aye.
Aye.
And no.
No.
You were gonna cost us extra money by voting like that, Larry, on these.
Evidently, it was an important enough resolution that the citizens should know what you're passing.
Well, apparently, not enough of them cared to come, did they? So let's keep moving forward here.
For the watershed.
Hang on.
Can I get the vote on that for this?
Yeah, it was four to one on both of those. Larry was a no on both of those. So, Mr. Sandstrom, I think we're done with your presentation here tonight. Do you have anything else for us, sir?
Yes.
I'm speaking to Mr. Sandstrom.
There was additional items, I believe, that were under staff updates. Mr. Mayor, I can, a couple of my memorandums are included in your packet. I'm happy to discuss those now or later on in the agenda, whatever.
Well, you might as well go ahead and take them on right now, since we have you up at, up on the plate. Oh, please, go ahead.
For point of clarification, can you please address those under staff updates?
Is that where you would like them?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Then that's what we will do. Thank you, Mr. Sandstrom, and administrator for pointing that out to me. Moving forward, then we're gonna get to new business, the acceptance of the 2016 final audit report. I'm not sure who's handling this, Kim, if it's Sharon or...
Sharon. Mr. Mayor, council, thank you. We need to report to the state auditor, as we do every year, by June thirtieth, and the auditors do take care of that. And they, you all have your audit reports. And if you turn to page thirty-seven, that has the variances, actual budget that the auditors thought should be pointed out. And we have talked about the cost of the city attorney on an ongoing basis, and later tonight, I'm sure that'll be talked about again. The building inspector and zoning, as you note, that our actual expense was sixty-six thousand dollars in excess of the budget, but as we all know, we weren't really expecting the housing market to take off. And if you look on page thirty-six, the seventh line down, our variance was eighty-five thousand dollars of additional income, and so those two really offset, and they are meant to offset. So our income and expenses...
Sharon, I'm a little confused. Your page numbers aren't matching up with what I'm looking at.
Thirty-six does not have the, thirty-six is the budget change.
Thirty-five? Ah, oh, sorry. It was my...
Okay.
Light here is great.
It's okay.
Yep, thirty-five, page thirty-five.
Thirty-five, okay.
Under revenues, licenses, and permits.
Okay.
We had an additional eighty-five thousand dollars in income, which offsets the additional expense that the auditors noted under building inspections and zoning. As you know, our As you know, our expenses with permits, our building permits, go along with our income because they're a percent of income.
Hence the $66,479 on page 37.
Right.
We've already got the additional income, I understand.
Right, we already have the additional income.
Okay.
All right, and road maintenance, at the end of the year, we approved the road project.
Keswick?
On Keswick. And so, and we did not bond for that, we are self-funding, and so we have additional expense on that line, and the income will come over the next 10 years as they pay for it with interest.
Okay. Real good, Sharon. And we had made that decision just for the residents here, that may sound a little strange. What we did is when Keswick Avenue wanted to get their road done, and many homeowners won't just write a check, they'll actually want to have a 10-year repayment schedule. What the city did is because we were getting such a low return on tax dollars that were sitting in the bank, our reserves, what we did instead is we self-funded that in order that the city may get a better return on the tax dollars that the residents paid in. So, it's a way to self-fund these projects, make a little bit more than the actual bank was paying us, a little bit more on your money, so.
Right, and the grant has a long history of doing that, too. This was not the first time that we have done that.
Good to know, thank you, I didn't know that.
Yep, way back when Jamaca was paved, we self-funded that.
Any other highlights for us?
No, I think that, overall, the city again came in close to budget, and our, on page 36, the beginning fund, $1,191, ending fund, $1,181, is really where we needed to be.
It's close.
Mm-hmm. We did a good job budgeting and spending our money close to our income.
I thought we did, too. Couple of aspects here that I noted just real quick before we moved to the council, as long as we have some residents here and some folks watching. Our public safety budget, overall, because we do not have, frankly, primary control over that, we do not have our own sheriff's department, we do not have our own, our own public safety, obviously, fire or anything else, it's somewhat out of our control. We bargain as hard as we can, but it's somewhat out of control. That did go up 12% from 2015 to 2016, so that was an uncontrollable cost on our part. However, we were able at the same time to increase our public works projects, our special roads projects and other projects that we were doing for citizens by 27% from 2015 to 2016. Now, while expenses in general, government, this is an important point, our expenses in general of government, so Kim and our staff and everything else, rose 1%. So, I'm fairly proud of that, that we're getting a lot of work done with exactly the same amount of money, and we have for years and years and years. Apparently, it's not good enough this year, but for years and years and years it has been for the city's residents. I'll point your attention to page nine as well. The city had 2016 governmental revenues of $1,539,249. That's 1,539,249. If you look at where we spent, the next one there, the graphical representation of the allocation of the city's 2016 governmental expenses, we spent $1,558,458. So, we spent 100% of the city's revenues. Why is that important? Because what we want to do is we want to, at least from my perspective, we want to take these taxes in, and we want to make quality of life as much as we can, consistent with good engineering and good information for the citizens of Grant. It's, I'm proud of that, because we're putting the money right back in, we're not taking much. My church, as I've said before, has doubled the budget of this city with 600 members.
Explain what your church head is?
I'd rather not, Larry, it's my religious preference, your business? I don't think so. Let's move to 11. There were a couple of things called out, Sharon, I wonder if you could talk about them a little bit. We have talked about, several times, about the depreciation schedules been recommended by the auditors in the past, and we have had discussions about that before, and frankly, don't own anything, so is your opinion still sort of the same on that, that a depreciation schedule, really indefinite, probably doesn't make sense for a city the size of Grant?
We've, we've never had one, the auditors keep track of it, and for us.
Okay.
And so, they have to disclose that they're doing it, not us.
Okay, so you're pleased with what's happening on that, because they keep calling it out, and I want to make sure that we're getting this out in the open here, and people have a chance to look at it, okay? I also note on page 42, that they're looking for perhaps some help on year-end reconciles. I know that they are doing the year-end reconciles for us, is that correct? We are doing the year-end reconciliation, you and Kim?
Ah, yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
But they prepare the actual financial statements.
Okay, so you guys reconcile the bill, everything at the end of the year?
Our bank accounts, our savings accounts, everything like that is reconciled.
Okay, so we have a secondary level of control, you reconcile, then they go back through all of the financial statements.
Right, right, to prepare them in accordance with GAAP.
Okay, yeah, fantastic. That's all I had, Sharon, there were just a couple of problems, and for the residents watching, you know, we have, because we have one part-time employee, there's never been an audit that I've seen in the city that didn't call for more oversight and for more people, but that would really require us to hire more people, and that's kind of not been the philosophy, to raise taxes in order to hire people to make the Clinton Allen Larson happy. We have had very good controls on this, and just like this, this audit here, we always come through with shining colors, other than those couple of things that are unavoidable because we have one part-time employee, there's really not too much we can do about that.
Other questions for Sharon? Lauren, you're first, go ahead.
Okay, Sharon, you mentioned Jamaca being asphalted, I thought that was a county road, doesn't the county take care of that?
When it was asphalted, the city owned it, and we traded for it.
Okay, I was just, wanted a clarification.
Long history, time ago.
Really long time ago.
Thank you, Sharon.
Little clarification, you're right, we did trade for McCusick Avenue, that used to be a county road, the city took over McCusick, look at McCusick Road, third world country. That being said, Sharon, can you please explain to me, in our budget, why monthly we are paying Mr. Kenny Johnson out of miscellaneous expenses without providing any receipts? We are still paying for mowing the town hall in January and plowing in July. Now, if we're going to enter into a contract for $108,000, which should have gone out for request for proposal, according to statute.
Larry, why don't we let her answer the question? You asked her a question.
I'm asking the question right out.
We already did.
Well, I got a twofold question.
But it gets a little complicated, so let her answer that part first, and why don't you follow up, okay? Because that way, that way she can answer it comprehensively, okay?
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for bringing this up again this year, Mr. Lunu, so that all the residents can understand that we have budgeted and paid Mr. Ken Johnson for our snow plowing and our road work, and he has agreed, rather than having an extreme amount of payments in the summer when most of the work is done, or a lot of the work is done, and in December and January, when most of the snow plowing is done, that he would take an even payment all year round. It's better for the city, better for us to plan our cash flows and have the money to make those payments. And as a council, you guys decided that it would be best to know each line item and each responsibility that Ken Johnson is performing for the city, and how much that is in total. But because we pay for it on a monthly basis, we record it on a monthly basis, and thus it shows that we're making those payments on a monthly basis, which we are, even though his services are like the bell curve. And, in addition to that, the council thought that in the future, if they wanted to move a single service to a different contractor, they would more readily be able to do that by understanding what portion of the payment goes to that. And really, excuse me, this is very similar to people who make their monthly payment on their utility bills on an equal annual basis, so that their expenses in the winter aren't extreme, while in the summer, if they don't run their air conditioning, it's very low. And so, it's just a concept that most of the cities that contract with Ken Johnson also do this in a similar manner, where they pay him on a monthly basis.
Second part, Larry?
Yeah, second part, Sharon, I'm sure you're aware that I sent a request to Clifton Larson Allen, just as requested on our city council, it asked me to return it to Michelle Hoffman, which we did. Sent it over there, it's been to the Attorney General's office and to the state auditor. Now, one of the things I have questioned is, many of you got your city newsletter this year last fall. It uses city logo, and it uses city staff, and it uses city postage, it's not reflected in our budget for Mr. Carr's campaign literature that he sent through the city website. Doesn't, doesn't reflect in our budget. That's why our state auditor and state Attorney General's office, so at this time, until the state Attorney General's office and the state auditor gives you a clean bill of health to say that we have no irregularities, I believe we can table this vote tonight until we hear back from them to say that there aren't irregularities in here.
I'll go ahead and take that one and answer that. Sharon, thank you so much. If you're done with your summation of the audit.
Unless there are any other questions.
I'm going to have you sit down for a second while I address this, just one second, please, if I may. Last year, Mr. Lunu, you sent a similar letter to our auditor, and our auditor spent, in fact, I think last year you actually asked, as you did this year, for a forensic audit, and last year I think you asked for the same. Last year you accused three, our road commissioner, was that two years ago, our road commissioner, our clerk, and then one of our, I think our gravel companies of embalmin or something. So, you, you, you cost us, they went ahead and did all the research on it, you cost us about $1,350 with these wild assertions of yours, and I, at that time, voted to go ahead and send that bill to your home. I still haven't seen that check, I hope to see that at some point. Now, you have sent in, if I remember correctly, on this latest audit, a 58 litany, page litany of complaints. You are amazing, you're both an engineer, a hydrologist, an accountant, you apparently have quite a varied background. The auditors at this time, I don't even believe have responded to you this year, I'm not even sure if they will respond to you, that would be their purview in order to do that or not. I would hope they do not even humor you this year, because they don't want it to cost the city another, another couple thousand dollars to humor you, that would be inconvenient. Mr. Carr, you have the floor.
Well, I don't know what he's talking about, but I don't think I advertised her campaign in the newsletter, so, I mean, I think that's ridiculous assertion, so.
Actually, we got a year to do it.
You know. Thank you, appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you very much, Sharon. So, anyway, those are the highlights of this. I would entertain a motion to approve it, Lauren, unless you had something more to say, I didn't see you down there, so I want to check with you.
Nope, that's fine, forget it.
I want to check with you, okay, real good.
The action before you tonight is to accept the audit.
To accept the audit.
Accept the audit.
Also move. Also move.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Very good. Those in favor of accepting the 2016 final audit report, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed?
No.
All right, gentlemen, thank you very much, good luck with your complaints, Larry. Let's go right to unfinished business, doesn't look like we have any other, let's jump into discussion items. City council reports, I'm going to start on this. Larry has jumped out of his seat once again, and stood in front of the cameras to tell us that he has by statute forced us to have a neighborhood meeting next week. Unfortunately, we have already scheduled that, the letters already went out in conjunction with the Valley Branch Watershed District. We're waiting for their engineering report, as we talked about it on our special roads projects, so that we can begin the planning and immediate raising of those roads as soon as we get the water off of them. We all know it's been a 30-year headache. I wish I had fixed it when I was on the council four years ago. Unfortunately, we didn't have flooding at that time, the flooding we had at that time, pardon me, was comparatively minor compared to this one. This one, I think, hit all of us by surprise, certainly myself. So, Valley Branch Watershed District, as well as the city, their engineering staff, myself, and probably some other members of the staff, will all be down at the Oakluther Church. Mr. Lunu has asserted that the reason that I would choose the Oakluther Church is that there are no cameras. I invite each and every one of you to bring your video cameras, to bring any other recording device you'd like to bring, because it is not an open meeting violation, I hope that you would bring it there, and you would go ahead and tape this.
Will it be recorded as part of the minutes?
One moment, please, I'm talking. So, bring that, and go ahead and tape that, so that you can get the answers that you want, and you can get some of the assurances that you want regarding your property. The reason that we did choose the Oakluther Church down there on 60th Street is, very frankly, we don't have air conditioning, we also do not have indoor plumbing, so I'm not sure if that matters to anyone, but it matters to most people that I set these meetings up with. They would like to have a bathroom, they'd also like to have some air conditioning if it's a very hot night. So, again, bring your recording devices. What I intend to speak about there, just from my part of it, is I intend to speak about what the city's going to do in terms of raising it. I intend to talk about the mitigation and the responsibility of the city to help individual residents to mitigate the flooding to their property, and how the city can work cooperatively with the Valley Branch Watershed, who is ultimately is, as they well know, responsible for the water flows along this watershed. The city does not have permission to put in a single culvert without their say-so, it's that simple, we cannot, not without their say-so. So, it's important to involve them as a cooperative partner, and, and to have the engineering available to do that. I hear that there's been some other engineering out there, wasn't aware of it, I'm not an engineer. Had I known, I would have been able to read it and been prepared for this meeting. It's unfortunate it wasn't given to me, it seems like that's a real habit, it always gets sprung at me when I sit up here, and then all of a sudden I'm told all about it, so it's interesting. I look forward to all seeing you out there, let me go ahead and mention it here very quickly, on the 26th, at 6:30, at the Oakluther Church, at, I believe it's 9550 60th Street North, I'm sure you're all aware of it, it's where you go to vote. Mr. Carr, you're next, sir.
Well, the only comment I'd like to make, and this has happened, this has been for a long time, and we sympathize with Sunnybrook. Like I said, I have not dropped it since we, I stood out there watching the flood last time, it's, we've been trying. The other issue we have is money, you know, it's a, it's a problem. We don't get any gas tax money, we don't get a lot of money as a city, so, and what we get, we have to frugally spend. So, where do we spend it? How do we spend it? Always a problem, we never have enough, there's no money tree. So, it's great that we have engineering, I've seen the engineering, it's been around forever, doesn't really matter if we don't have any money. I mean, that's the ultimate truth, I mean, you could be, you know, so, it's great to know what we can do, there's lots of things we can do. I have a lot of things in my house I like to fix, I don't have money for that right now, so I don't fix them. It's the same thing with the city, we like to do everything, we like to help our residents, we want to do it all. So, the problem is the funding, and it's been, it's been a problem, and, and big people just, you know, saying what they'll do, what they won't do, watersheds, everybody, and it's, it's just, we just need to keep working at it, and it's slow, but we are working at it, but I think the funding thing, to Mr. Huber's thing, I didn't know about the engineering, it doesn't really matter unless we get the funding, so. I look forward to working through the projects, still trying to get going forward, it's been slow, but keep moving forward, I think that's the important part, it'll get done, so.
I have a comment.
I look forward to that, thank you very much, Mr. Carr, go ahead, Mr. Seaterston.
Well, the question I would ask, if we've self-funded other issues in the, in the city, why don't we also self-fund this? This seems to be, would be a logical thing, it's a darn near emergency situation, that why don't we go ahead and self-fund, get together with the watershed, and I'm sure that they have proposals in there, they can come up with something, and, yeah, it's going to be a little bit of a hit, but, but over 10 years, spend it over 10 years, and solve the problem.
Well, I'll answer that, because the self-funding that Sharon was talking about was a paving project, so we actually bonded that. When we bond for improvements within the city, we have to, as you well know, under state law, prove to the state and to the residents, and in fact, we've had residents before dispute this, that the bonding that we are doing, the improvement project that we're doing, adds more value to their property than the work we are doing. So, for example, if we were to bond, I've heard estimates, I've heard it's half million, three quarter million dollars, if we were to bond that, we'd have to prove that we've actually improved under state law, and Mr. Sandstrom, I'm saying this to you directly because I want to be corrected if I'm, if I'm wrong, that we have to prove that we have actually improved the property's value by that amount, or it's not a legal bonding. Mr. Sandstrom, would you like to speak to that real quick? Because I think that's a, that's a good question by Mr. Seaterston, in terms of freeing up funding for the issues.
Yeah, you know, another attorney in my office is the expert on bonding, but yes, that is my understanding, that there needs to be a demonstrable benefit that goes along with the bond.
If I could mention, the last time, the number was $70,000, and it was among 15 residents, and I'm not an expert in real estate like you and Mr. Carr, but I'm quite sure a house underwater isn't as worth as much as a house that isn't underwater.
And I would not disagree with your assertion, I think that that's common sense and well put, that, whether or not that would solve the overall issue in terms of it not being a flood plain, or not being an area that is at risk of flooding at that point, I'm not sure. That's why the neighborhood meeting has been called, because the, the issues that we're dealing with here tonight, gentlemen, they're fun to yell about and say we should have got them done in the 90s, and we should have got them done there, and what's wrong with all you guys, they are much more complex than that, and without the Valley Branch Watershed District's input and partnership with us, which they are not prepared to give yet, because they are doing, working through their own issues here, we can't really make those decisions yet, Lauren. But that's something to keep in mind, whether or not a bonding portion of this could be funded that way. I'm sure, I'm not opposed to any solution that gets the, that mitigates the problem to the greatest extent possible, so, if that's part of it, I'm all for it. Larry, go ahead.
Yep, I'd like our attorney's opinion. I have properly applied for a special meeting one week from tonight at 7 o'clock at this very town hall, so it can be recorded, our citizens of Grant can participate. If they want to find the documentation and the stuff, you go to the Grant reporter, Mr. Huber says it's a political newspaper.
No, no.
But there, nobody's running, nobody is running, nobody is running for office, so if you simply want good, honest reporting.
If you're leftism on display.
It's sit here.
Mr. Lanu, sorry, what's your question for me?
My question is for you. I have properly asked for a special meeting as per statute. It's allowed by having just two councilmen with a written request, which has been properly served and given to the clerk. You have a written request for a special meeting at a certain time. If you fail to have it at that prescribed time, you are probably going to be sitting looking in court for violation of civil rights, or we'll get into some type of litigation, so we can have a meeting.
You'll sue again. There's a surprise.
Yes. You know, thirty-five years, folks, in business, I've never used an attorney once. I'm on a city council. Now, we got one on speed dial. It's cost me thirty thousand dollars to sit next to this jerk.
Sorry, what's the question? I missed the question.
If the meeting will go forward or not.
This meeting, I have properly applied for it according to Minnesota statute. Can you tell me?
Is this, is this your application?
Did you read the front?
I don't know. I was handed it in this way. Is this the front?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, it looks like a request for a special meeting, and so, yes, the clerk should move forward with the process for noticing a special meeting. She'll need to post that notice, and it doesn't necessarily mean that a quorum of the council is able to show up, and that any business can be conducted, but it is noticed, and the public can show up and listen to what's said.
Can you read the article, and could you read it to the citizens of Grant that's written in red on the back?
Yeah. Mr. Carr, you had your question answered.
I just asked him to read it.
You had your question answered. Enough grants.
All meetings in the council shall be open to the public. The council may preserve order of the meetings, compel attendance of members, and punish non-attendance. So, if they do not show up, folks, we'll be in court.
No, we won't.
No, I fail, I fail to see why we're talking about whose meeting is better when we're having a meeting.
Because one is legal and the other is not necessarily.
Well, go ahead. Excuse me, Kim.
Mayor, councilmembers, I just want to add to the discussion about the Valley Branch Watershed District. The city did, on behalf of the Watershed District, apply for a grant back in February, so there were some dollars available. The Watershed District does not, they have not heard yet what is happening with that grant, but that is out there on behalf of the city. And then I just want to note, the meeting that was scheduled at the church is a neighborhood meeting. It is not a council meeting. There's no council action. Clearly, council members are welcome to attend. It will be posted, so there's no violations, but there will not be minutes. It will not be taped. No action is going to be taken. It's more of a neighborhood meeting, a back-and-forth, if you will, with the neighborhood.
Discuss options.
Which is the purpose of a special meeting, to be taped and recorded.
No, it isn't.
Why? I don't, I don't, I just, you're beyond birds, but, you know, the issue is that we are here to talk about setting up a meeting, working with the issue. It was no different than we all met out there on the road a couple of years ago. We're trying to get to the bottom of the problem.
And nothing is done.
Oh, no, we have done quite a few things, actually, since then. That grant that just got done, that wasn't done by itself. That was me and our engineer and the clerk, all still, the new culverts. We're still working forward. It's just slow, and there's not a lot of money, again. I'll say that again. So, I would rather not sit up here and argue about whose meeting is better, whose meeting is better. And if it's ninety degrees, I'd be well-served to be in the air-conditioned than sitting in this building. So, I don't, I don't get the whole process. So, I will very much be at the other meeting. I will not be attending the special meeting, because I don't see a need for it. We have a meeting scheduled. I think it's a better idea. So, that's my opinion.
There was, the reason that it was scheduled on the twenty-sixth is because it gave everyone time to sort of get their house in order. It gave Valley Branch Watershed time to get their house in order. It gave myself, the staff, time to get their house in order. There's nothing that can be achieved on the thirteenth that we cannot achieve in a neighborhood setting with a back-and-forth, where these neighbors can get every one of their questions answered, and they can get assurances as to what's going to be happening. There's nothing that can be accomplished at this city council, because Larry, we could have your meeting. Unfortunately, there's no money to do these things. You could vote all day long. There's no money if we do not have the Valley Branch Watershed working with us to do these things. So, you can make all types of wild promises, and obviously, you're good at that. No, you may not, ma'am. This is not a public hearing. Go ahead, Larry.
Okay, at this time, I would like to recognize the young lady in the back and the gentleman from the watershed, because we used to be a friendlier community. We allowed our citizens to get out and be done.
We did, and it's chaotic, and it is chaotic, and I am not going to allow it. I am not going to allow it.
What I want to say is, my yard has been flooded many, many times, in the front and in the back. I called my insurance company for flood insurance. They won't give it to me because I'm not living on a floodplain.
Okay. Well, who determines whether or not you live on a floodplain, ma'am? I hate to go back and forth like this, because it's very chaotic. They can't see it on camera.
I have asked the insurance company. I don't know. It was done many years ago.
Actually, the Federal Emergency Management Agency does that, a federal agency, so I wouldn't be able to help you with that neither would Valley Branch Watershed District. So, a great question to bring to that neighborhood meeting. We can, we can cover those issues there. That would be, that would be fine. I can't make, I cannot make that special meeting, Larry. That's why I put it on the twenty-sixth. Tom?
Could I invite everybody to just come down Joston Road and take a look?
I was there before I came to the meeting, ma'am. Went there, turned around, and came back to see how far it went down. Go ahead, Tom.
And I asked the mailman, the garbage man, the school bus.
It is inconvenient.
Inaction, inaction to the comment from the audience. I was at meetings where we did not, people could not buy flood insurance because they were not in a floodplain zone, and we had FEMA maps, and Craig's not in his head, and we allowed them by council action to do that. Otherwise, they couldn't. I don't know why you're not. You should be. There's ways we can work with you on that. It's one of the things we can talk about. So, I'm surprised it's not. I can pull, you can pull up, go to FEMA, you can pull up the maps. But no, we can do that. We did it before. Craig knows.
Yeah. If this is something that's within our power, ma'am, this is why we want to have this on the twenty-sixth, because I don't have every bit of information. I don't claim to know it all. The gentleman in charge of this know it. We can get a history lesson going. We can get our lawyers involved in this, so that questions like this can be fairly and correctly addressed. I didn't know that, so I'm sitting here giving you bad information because I don't know it yet. So, I would like to see you on the twenty-sixth, so we can answer that question and others with complete confidence in terms of me having done my homework, in terms of the engineers having done their homework, and in terms of Valley Branch Watershed District having done their homework, instead of showing up a week from now, when I know nothing yet. I know nothing, Mr. Carr.
Well, the only other comment would be, Larry's special meeting screening on everybody, we don't know if people can come. He's saying, "There's clients are supposed to be here tonight." They're not here. Well, maybe they were busy, you know? I mean, you know, let's plan it a little bit. Let's plan it a little bit. Let's get everybody together. I don't think that's an unreasonable thing, so that's, that's my comment.
We're done with this, Larry.
Now, at this time, I would ask, I would ask our city council to consider that special meeting. I'll agree to the twenty-sixth. If the city council will agree to have it in our city hall, where it will be taped and recorded and entered into the minutes.
Larry, there's no reason. Why not just come on the twenty-sixth, tape it? Why not just come on down?
I have agreed that we can have the meeting.
Set up a camera.
On the twenty-sixth, if we set it here, where it will be taped and recorded as part of the minutes, as a special meeting, so we can have them both on the same time, both taped and recorded.
I'm not interested more grandstanding.
The only thing, and I'll point to what our administrator clerk has said, that it's not an official meeting. It's a neighborhood meeting. You don't tape neighborhood meetings. We don't do that. We don't tape, we don't tape workshops.
And that's the one that the watershed should be attending.
We don't tape budget meetings where we're talking about the budget. We do all, we don't. We never have. It's not like we're not doing it.
I want an official meeting.
Yeah, well, great. You know what? And you're not the dictator.
Thank you. You're not a dictator. You can, you can propose it. You certainly can. You certainly can. You certainly can. Thank you very much. We set it up that time. We're going to go right past this and go.
Mr. Sandstrom would like to say something, if you don't mind.
Mr. Sandstrom, feel free, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to point out that there's no legal requirement that meetings be videotaped in any regard, and it's frankly quite typical, in my experience, that special meetings are not recorded, because usually the city is on a schedule with a person that comes and runs your video equipment, and they may not be available on a special meeting night. So, there's absolutely no requirement for a special meeting to be taped, and in fact, it's common that they're not taped.
Right. No, I understand that, Mr. Sandstrom, and that's absolutely correct, and what we're trying to do is get these neighbors in here in an informal way, so that we can answer these types of questions. We can sit down face-to-face, answer these types of questions, grab an expert, bring that expert over, and answer these questions. If we go through the formality of this special meeting, so Larry can go off on us again, because we didn't fix this thirty years ago, it's not getting to the root of the problem. It's not a cooperative effort. It's more of this, and it's not productive, Mr. Carr.
Kim, could you post, you know, I guess apparently you've got to post a special meeting according to Kevin, so would you want to post both? Put the one for the twenty-sixth as having air conditioning in a bathroom. Would you do that? Put it on the website.
You can put that on there if you wanted to. You have to post them both, and you might want to speak with Kevin about the legalities of that.
I will add, in my experience with special meetings, and the city of Grant has had a lot of them since I have been around. There are absolutely, this is the right process, and two council members can request one. I've spent a lot of time in the past years scheduling those to make sure all council people can attend. I don't think I've ever had a special meeting request where it was already set up.
Yeah. It's unusual, but it always is.
May I ask our administrator something?
We're already done with this. It's on the twenty-sixth.
Can we move on to staff updates, please?
Kevin, do you want to get to the cities?
Point of information, point of information. Point of information.
Nope. I want to hear your information.
You don't need clarification.
I'm going to use Robert's rules, parliamentary procedure.
Nope, never used it.
Parliamentary procedure? Are we using just rules tonight?
City's legal process.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your packet are two different memorandums prepared by my office. First one relating to response to Councilmember Cedarstrom's inquiry about the litigation process in the city. I don't want to sit and go through all the details of this memorandum. Just to summarize it, the crux of the issue was Mr. Cedarstrom requesting information about how litigation is commenced and overseen in the city. And as I explained in my memorandum, largely, the litigation process in the city is complaint-driven, and so, city staff receives a complaint. Typically, what happens first is your city administrator, along with your city building official, who deals with code compliance, goes out and inspects and goes through a process where they send a series of notice letters to the person with the violation. And if they are unable to remedy it, then typically that goes, is referred on by them to my office, and litigation is started to remedy that code enforcement issue. And so, hopefully, that explains to Councilmember Cedarstrom, as well as the rest of the council generally, how that process works. The second memorandum in your packet, again, I will just refer to briefly. It's the response in my investigation of Councilmember Lanu's complaint that he provided at the last city council meeting. It was actually referenced during the public comment section by your planning commissioner, Mr. Helander. That complaint was regarding an alleged open meeting law violation by a group of four planning commission members. And the result of my investigation, after talking to all the different people that were involved, was that there was not an open meeting law violation, primarily because in order for an open meeting to occur, not only do more than a quorum of any public body need to be present, but city business needs to be discussed or information received as a group in that context. And in my review of this issue, it was clear that there was no discussion of city business. As Mr. Helander pointed out, it just happened to be planning commissioners kind of having casual chit-chat as the meeting had just adjourned, and they were packing up their things and getting ready to leave, and that sort of casual chit-chat did not involve discussing city business, and therefore, an open meeting law violation did not occur, in my opinion. And so, I didn't, the conclusion was that no further action was necessary on that complaint.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Will I ask a couple of questions?
Please, why don't you go first? Maybe we'll get you to go first, please.
Okay. Well, I have a couple of questions. I guess I have concern that the city council doesn't vote on specific lawsuits, and I think we should be involved. Let me give you a couple of examples. There was a lawsuit that came back. They prosecuted an individual for stalking, and it came back no probable cause. That means there wasn't a reason to adjudicate it to begin with. It wasn't dismissed. It was no probable cause. Why in the world are we going to be issuing lawsuits when they come back no probable cause? I think the city council should be getting involved in some of these things, making the decisions, rather than have the attorney's office running like a, you know, Mexican taxi driver on speed with a meter running.
Well, let me clarify here, because the memo that you provided, Councilmember Cedarstrom, referenced civil litigation, and an issue of a criminal charge is criminal prosecution, and frankly, absolutely never does the city council get involved in the determination of who does or does not get prosecuted, primarily because the law, very specifically on those issues, leaves those determinations to your law enforcement officials and your city prosecutor. And so, in that circumstance, in the first instance, your criminal, your police force has to investigate the issue and determine whether or not they believe, as a matter of probable cause, that a crime has occurred. And that's not a determination that the city council makes. That's a determination that your law enforcement makes. And from that determination by your police department, which is the Washington County Sheriff in this circumstance, that matter gets referred on to the prosecutor for additional determination as to whether or not a crime has occurred. And there's certain regulations and duties that prosecutors are bound by to prosecute items that appear to be a crime. And so, that's generally not something that comes before the council.
Okay, I want to make two points. First of all, Centennial Lakes did not recommend it for prosecution, where that with the alleged innocent had occurred. It was then sent to Washington County. So, somehow, in this end of things, things got mixed up. The second thing I want to add is Mr. Smith was prosecuted for using the logo, and by the way, that logo was a product of a contest. And as you know, with, for example, Winter Carnival, when they, when they give, the winner gets the, gives the symbol, he signs the rights away. Mr. Van Zewall has never signed the rights away to the logo. It logo has never been patented or copyrighted, et cetera. Again, it's another bogus lawsuit, where we got the attorneys like a Mexican taxi driver on speed with a meter running. We're spending all this money for nothing.
Mr. Sandstrom, can you speak to that one? The use, the use of the logo to advertise the charter commission. A letter was sent, as you may remember, asking the person in question to stop using it. They refused. Do you remember that one?
I do, Mr. Mayor, and that issue involved a violation of the city's trademark and copyright rights, and I'm not going to get, I'm not going to get into the details of the copyright.
Because you don't have them is why.
Let the attorney speak, please, gentlemen.
A lawsuit was commenced to protect the city's rights in that regard, and in fact, was found in the city's favor. It went through the appellate court process, through a final determination by the Minnesota Supreme Court that affirmed, well, sorry, did not affirm yet, denied any further review of that matter, and so, it's now been finalized in the court system in the city's favor.
Okay. Thank you very much. Larry, do you have questions on the city's actual legal process?
Well, too, I mean, it's the same as you talked about, the Grant logo, which is what the mayor used in his campaign material that went out. But my question for you is open meeting violation. Now, you say that you reviewed and determined there's no action to be taken. You determined that there were not four people in there. I've got the picture showing Mr. Tufti. There were four people involved, but you never called me and asked me. Now, perhaps you can tell me what time that meeting ended? You know what time it ended?
Time it ended?
Yes, because you investigated, determined there's no open meeting violation. You know when the meeting was done.
Well, the exact time that ended was not relevant, because I actually questioned the people, and they confirmed and agreed that the meeting was done at the time your pictures were taken. And so, that wasn't, that wasn't an issue that was in dispute in my investigation.
I actually got a timestamp on it.
Mr. Lanu, I just agreed that the meeting was done at that time. There wasn't any dispute on that issue.
Yep, and in your conclusion from there, you told everybody I stood outside the window and took a picture of the open meeting violation. Folks, I'm a little vertically challenged. If I went outside, I don't think I could get a picture. It would look a little fuzzy coming through the screen, so he didn't do his job right to begin with. And you took testimony from a city administrator that was dating a married councilmember.
Unbelievable, unbelievable. That is unbelievable, Larry. Larry.
You have some decorum, sir.
That actually, that actually stated at the, in the, in court, that you did not deny conditional use from it.
Please apologize. Please apologize to our administrator. That was a horrible thing to say. That was a personal attack on someone. You have absolutely no evidence, Larry. Why would you say that? Why would you show yourself to be that type of person? Please apologize.
I'm not going to apologize. If you'd like, we'll be in court, and I'll get a deposition, and I'll get approved by deposition.
Why would you bring that? Why would you bring that to this table, Larry? Why is that relevant to your question, sir?
Because the very person that you asked to verify that no one admitted, the very character that I'm questioning, our city planner and our city attorney said in court that I would not deny a conditional use from it. I have the actual letter that said you did deny it, so.
You actually urged yourself to go ahead and get out of here.
Mayor, councilmembers, I do have a couple of good updates.
I will not, I will not apologize. I will provide a deposition.
Okay. We got a couple of real comments that we want to, thank you.
Kim, you're first.
Staff updates. First off, let's see, your July regular meeting is going to be June twenty-ninth
Oh, great.
to accommodate the Fourth of July week.
Okay, thank you.
And on that agenda, you will bring your calendars, because we will be setting a 2018 budget work session. It will not be taped, but there will be a budget work session set up.
That was my same comment.
Thank you.
They're never taped.
Let's see. Several months ago, the League of Women Voters undertook a study of adherence to Minnesota open laws in thirty-two municipalities. They just finished that up, and they are pleased to report all municipalities met the requirements of Minnesota open meeting law. So, that was good news for all the cities involved. The Stillwater Fire District, their ISO PPC rating will go to a four effective June first, 2017.
That's good, good.
So, folks that are in the Stillwater Fire District, you are encouraged to contact your insurance carrier. That may lower your rates with that new rating.
Good deal.
I think the, that's it.